I urge everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands for a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I want to thank you all for coming this evening. I'm sorry I'm starting late. I had a couple of board members. Bill Perkins won't be here tonight because he's not feeling well. And Steve is going to be here. Steve August won't be here because he's out of the country. And I think Jen is on her way. So, um, do we have a forum? We do. We've got a forum. So, for my comments from the chair this evening, we've got a fair amount of business that we want to get to, and I know budget's a big issue, but I felt that I probably ought to address one issue right from the start. And I know this has been an issue of concern within the RSU community, and I felt we should just address it right up front. And that is the band instruction position at Pittsburgh. How many of you are here tonight specifically because of that? Okay. Before I get into sort of the board's take or my take on it, I just want to make something clear to all the folks in the community that the board is not the enemy. You know, in fact, we are you up here. We are parents, we are citizens, we are taxpayers. My kids play sports with your kids. You know, we're active in the community. We're doing our best to try and keep the best interests of kids in mind. We're trying to do what you're trying to do. And there seems to be just a little bit of a difference of opinion, but, and maybe I'm being sensitive, but I don't want to be perceived as the enemy. I don't want the board to be perceived as the enemy with regard to this issue. We as a board have an obligation to serve all our schools and all our children, and we're trying to do the very best that we can. So that said, for the folks that are here, the position for some folks in Pittsburgh is regarding the band position, instruction position. Community of Pittsburgh has a great deal of pride in the band program. They have indicated to the board through emails that they would like to see Kathy Dowing's position increase from one and a half days to two days for band instruction. In 2012, due to increased costs and a loss of funding, we ended up making some reductions. And Kathy's position at the time was one of those reductions. It went from a two days a week to one and a half days a week. That's my understanding of the position for the folks in Pittsburgh. That's what they'd like to see happen. From my understanding and the board's understanding, in 2012, our Assistant Superintendent met with music departments across the district to look at delivery of instruction and equity. Part of what was driving that meeting was the fact that the district had to make some cuts, and we were looking, you know, everywhere to do that. The other reason for that was to make sure that we had equity across the district in terms of how we were delivering the program, how we were delivering instruction. When the Assistant Superintendent had that meeting, all instructors were invited to attend. The Assistant Superintendent made an effort to create a balanced program across the district and best distribute resources in an equitable and fair manner. So we looked at instruction at all of the elementary schools, at the middle schools and at the high school, to try to determine, are we being equitable across the district in terms of instruction, and is there a better way to distribute resources? And frankly, what we found, and we've seen it over the past few years, there's been a real gap at the high school level, and we continue to try and fill that need. But anyway, back to 2012. Staff from music departments participated in that process, and they were ultimately part of the decision-making process for the final configuration. And currently, this is just for band instruction, and I have most of the principals here, so please correct me if I'm wrong. This past year, for our elementary schools, this is what band instruction and band lessons looks like. At Fisher Mitchell, there are 35 students involved in band. Band only meets near the end of the year, and in terms of lessons, there are group lessons once per week. At Pittsburgh, there are 30 students that participate in band. Band meets two times per week for 45 minutes, and then there are individual lessons one time per week for 15 to 20 minutes. In West Bath, there are 38 students who participate in band. Band meets one time per week for 35 minutes, and there are group lessons one time per week for 15 minutes. And at Woolwich, there are 23 students who participate in band, and band meets one time per week for 45 minutes, and there are group lessons one time per week for 20 minutes. And I can give all of you that information, and I hope, from the elementary school principals, that I'm representing that accurately. So, that still doesn't necessarily address the needs that the folks in Pittsburgh have with regard to the pride they have in their program and the feelings they have with their instructor. And I just had some other notes here. I'll try not to take too long on this. I think it is, it's been a great thing that folks went out and started a petition, and it shows a real need within the community for more music instruction. But I think if you were to ask anyone here in the board, we would say the same thing. We want more music, we want more arts, we want more, more of everything. Music, art, band, and all programs that contribute towards the education of the whole child, as far as we're concerned. But as a board, we're faced with finite resources, and we have to make difficult choices. And we're not only making choices that affect your tax dollars, we're making choices that affect the tax dollars of all citizens in the RSU. We have to present a budget that serves both our students and also one that will be passed by the taxpayers. So, I don't know what's going to happen with that position tonight as we discuss the budget and the next time we meet when we vote on the budget. But how do you folks make a change? A petition is a great thing, but you want to build on that. And what happens with the budget process is the board will vote on a budget that is presented to them by the administration after we've had a chance to debate it. Once the board has voted on that budget, that budget is then our budget. And we stand by that budget, and we advertise above that budget, but then we go through a two-step process. The first part of the process is there is a public meeting that will be held at Bath Middle School, and I don't have the date in front of me, it's early May, where the citizens then have to vote on that budget. The citizens at that time have an opportunity to include items, add items to the budget or deduct items from the budget. You would have an opportunity, if you were so inclined, to add back that position, as long as somebody seconds that motion, then the folks in the room would vote that up or down. That's when the citizens really have an opportunity to make a difference and impact the budget. And you folks have that opportunity. So, you've started the process with the petition. I would encourage you to reach out to those people and say, you need to show up at a budget meeting, and you need to vote. Because as I said, all of us here, if you were to ask us, do we want more music in the schools, we're going to say yes. Do we want more art? Yes. Do we want more foreign language? Yes, 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 yes. But does it meet the needs of the district? Can we afford it? Those are the things that we have to wrestle with. The last thing I'm going to say is I encourage all of you to speak. Tonight, we, as any night during our board meetings, we have a public comment section, or it's part of, it's an agenda. I encourage you to share your viewpoint. But for those of you who have never spoken before, I just want to lay out a couple of things. We call it a public comment section. It's not a public discussion session. So, if you ask questions, we will do our best at another time to answer them, but it's not, board meetings are a chance for us to get that forward business, and we don't want to get into a dialogue. So if we're not answering your questions, we're not being disrespectful, it's just the way the process works. The other thing is I ask you, when you come up, when we get to the public comment section and you want to speak, just state your name, and if you could, limit your comments to two minutes, just so that other people have an opportunity to speak. So, I think in the future, and we talked about this, it would be a good idea for members of this board and the administration to meet with members of the Pittsburgh community to engage in more of a dialogue about general concerns that they have about the RSU. But at the end of the day, I want you to know that we're aware of how you feel, and that we are not the enemy, we just have a point of disagreement. But we are parents, citizens, as I stated before. And I hope that, you know, you feel free to contact us or contact the administration, you know, if you have further concerns. All right. So let's move on to item 4.0, approval amendment minutes of March 23rd. Is there a motion? Motion approved by Kyle, second by Alan. Any discussion on these? Alan, could you grab the mic?
In the second paragraph on your front page, recognition comments from the chair, six minutes down, I think should be changed to will need instead of will.
Anything else? Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve. Define what the change is.
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hands. Not opposed, and passes. Okay, item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. Any adjustments? Hey, nothing this evening. Item 6.0, public comment section. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to an item that is on the agendas? No? Okay. Item 7.0, public forum on the 2016 proposed budget. We'll first open it up to the board, or I'll start with Patrick, and then we'll open it up to the public. Public comment. Anything from the board? Okay, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak to the budget?
Hello, I'm Katie Frosty from Pittsburgh. And I noticed, Tim, that in your comments, you've talked about Pittsburgh residents wanting more, and it's not that we want more, it's that we want to maintain what we have. So Kathy has been volunteering that half-day for the last two years. So we're, if she, if she doesn't get approval for that half-day that was cut, we're losing. It's going to be a cut, we will see next year. And that cut could be anywhere from kids getting turned away from band to us no longer having the July 4th parade or the Memorial Day parade, possibly not having the concert in the park. So it's not that we want more, it's that we want to maintain what we currently have. She has kindly volunteered that half-day for the past two years. And so I think it's important that we understand that, that it's not more, it's maintaining what we have. Thirty kids in our band equals about 90% participation rate. So there's only about four kids out of the possible current fourth and fifth graders that aren't doing in Pittsburgh. Huge participation rate, 90%. I think Kathy's going to employ the artful of Pittsburgh and the RSU for 29 years, and it's definitely going to be a sad moment next year if we lose that half-day. We take pride in our band, maybe Bath Middle School and Moore see benefits from the Pittsburgh band. Just in a recent concert, four out of the nine jazz band kids in the band were from So those cuts could happen next year if she doesn't get that half-day back. So again, it's not more, it's maintaining what we have. I think in one of, in earlier email between you and I and the board, one of the statements was, "In my mind, we reinstate programs based upon two factors: what is going to benefit kids the most and what is going to impact the greatest number of students." And that philosophy, I have to say, I kind of disagree with when it comes to a small town. We're a small town, we're a small population, and I feel like we need to embrace the uniqueness of our communities and not feel like we need to be completely equitable across the board. I think Pittsburgh has lost out, for example, our nutritional program. We have a cook, and she, she, we have one cook, we used to have two cooks, and now we're down to one. And I think all the other communities have more than one nutrition person in their kitchen. And she's clearly worked, warped the max, and in fact, this year's her last year, she won't be working with us next year because she's kind of just frankly burned out. So I don't think that that philosophy goes well. I mean, she's trying, she's trying to feed, you know, all these students, and we've gone from an 80% participation rate in our lunchroom to a 40%. And I just don't think this philosophy of impacting the most, greatest number of students works for a small town. We need to embrace our uniqueness. I just, I guess those are my main comments. But I also wanted to let you know, I know we have a petition going, and it's ongoing, but I wanted to hand over a couple of those signatures that we have. We have about over, close to 200 so far, signatures both on paper and through the change.org website. There's some amazing comments that people have, just she, Kathy clearly goes above and beyond. She doesn't limit her instruction to just two concerts a year, it's, these are all extra concerts. And I think it's going to be a pretty sad day when we're watching the July 4th parade or the Memorial Day parade, and we don't see the Pittsburgh Elementary School.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? And again, just to clarify a point, because maybe I wasn't clear, and I wanted to clarify this. The position that I take, and I, and now I can only speak for myself, I can't speak for the rest of the board. When I look at programming, the lens that I look at it through is, I do look at what's going to have the biggest impact on kids and what's going to impact the greatest number of kids. That does not translate into trying to emphasize a larger population or a smaller population. It's merely looking at, if we have to weigh two different programs or two different levels of instruction, first and foremost, it's what's going to really have the biggest impact on kids. And then secondarily, what is going to reach out to the greatest number of kids. And I think that there are examples where we have recognized the needs of Pittsburgh or West Bath or Woolwich, and not necessarily had things equitable across the district, say with Daigul or Fisher Mitchell, because we recognize that there are smaller populations in those schools, and those populations need to be served. So I'm sorry if you misunderstood what it was that I was saying, but it's never clearly about numbers, and for me, first and foremost, it's about what is going to impact kids the most. And as I said, again, survey is great, a petition is great, you need to get these people to show up and participate. We would all sign a petition and say that, yes, we support music. But those people need to show up, they need to make a motion, and that needs to pass through the budget. That's how things get done. This is what we're aiming for, you guys need to build on that. So I wish you luck with that. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the budget? Okay, Lulu, welcome.
Hi, Carol Reese from Pittsburgh. Of course, I feel it's really about band. It's, you know, I'm really hoping that, you know, we can bring forth the numbers that could have gone in, that's what it's going to take, you know, on the final budget hearing. And I also had a question on the budget. Woolwich School Athletics, what is, what is their athletic program, consistent program?
Yeah, I was talking about Woolwich. It's a middle school program, grades, I'm correct, 6, 7, 8, 6-7 in productivity, and it's soccer and it's basketball. Correct? So cheering, right? Right, again. And so there's stipends for, you know, coaches there, as well as transportation and some efficient fees. So I don't, I mean, I don't, again, as a rough estimate of, you know, if you put those all together, how much it is, but that's really what the, so to speak, athletic program is at Woolwich. Sports that are not offered at Carroll, and that's all we offer at Woolwich. If, you know, if they want to take advantage, you know, they just, you can go to BMS and participate in their athletic program as well.
Okay, anyone else on the budget? All right. Item 8.0, committee report. We'll start with item 8.1, Morris High School Building Committee.
Yeah, I'll start. Anybody that's here from Pittsburgh or from any of our communities, I will just stress this, is that we have a fairly healthy list of people that volunteer from the communities to be on a subcommittee for a, for the Morris Building Project. And so we have a lot of interest here, but if anybody here tonight would like to sign up for a committee, you know, please call us in the morning, call up Morris at our central office and sign up, or like, does the board, the mayor, or why are you here? Before I introduce two people that are here tonight to do a brief presentation, again, I feel like I have to do this every meeting, but I just make sure that we're clear, is that Morris High School Building Project is a state-supported project. Doesn't mean that they're going to cover up 100% of costs, but they might cover, I guess I'm calling the majority of costs. Is that we're having studies done right now that are looking at the existing facility and the existing site, and then they're also looking at potential new sites for a new school. So no decision has been made yet about whether it will be a new Morris High School, whether it will be a renovated Morris High School, and if it is new, whether it will be at the existing site or whether it will be someplace else in one of our communities. So having said that, though, the Department of Education requires us to do those studies, as well at the same time is look for potential land parcels, and so that's what we're going to be talking about a little bit tonight. Just so that people are aware, and we put this in the papers, we put it on our RSH1 Facebook page, and other outlets, is that Wednesday, the 29th, and I know this is difficult for some people that volunteer on these committees, we'll try to work through this, but we, you know, we work with the Valley Prince and Orange and Architectural Farm out of Hampshire, as well as we have other evening meetings that go on in the district, is that we're having these committee meetings over the day right now, it only lasts an hour, and then at night, is our plan, is to have the community meetings when people come up. So 12 o'clock on the 29th is our site selection subcommittee we'll be meeting. At 1, it will be the Visioning Committee, at 2, it will be the Public Relations Committee. Then on Wednesday, the 29th, at 6, in Montgomery Theater at Morris will be the first, I guess you call it community forum, public forum. Come, ask any question, get an update on where we are in the process. This is an exciting thing. We definitely go over last week or two weeks ago, and a lot of local business owners, you know, were very interested in what we had to say. So it is an exciting time for us, and at this point, what I'll do is introduce a couple people that are here, and we're going to do a brief PowerPoint. So we have Steve LePoot here, who's from the Valley Prince here, and we have Kylie Mason, who's from the State of Techniques. And they're going to give you a brief presentation of kind of where we're at in the process, and also show you some visuals of really the parcel of land that we're looking at as a possibility. So, thanks a lot.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us here. Again, my name is Steve LePoot, I'm an architect with the Valley Prince and Architects, and we're here, as Patrick said, to give you a brief update on where we are in the process of transforming Morris High School and the RCTC for the future needs of students, faculty, staff, and the community. The process that we've undertaken has involved four tasks that we're working on simultaneously. The first task is to assess the existing building, so we're looking at what's significant about it and its deficiencies. The second task is we're drafting a space program. So what we've already done is we've looked at all the spaces in the existing building, we've measured them all, and we're looking at how they're being utilized, whether they're being efficient or not. And we're using that as a basis to start creating a new space program, based on input from students, staff, and the community, in conjunction with state standards. The third task is that we are holding what we call visioning meetings, and Patrick has touched on that a little bit, where we're going to be meeting, having meetings with students, faculty, staff, and the community, and we're asking three basic questions. What's significant about Morris High School and the RCTC? What are the obstacles and barriers to learning and education? And the question of what if? If these barriers and obstacles weren't there, what would the building be? What are the sort of programs you're looking for? How should education be conducted in that? These are important questions because the feedback that we get, speaking with all the different stakeholders, we start to see what the priorities are. We start developing an attitude and philosophy towards designing what Morris High School and Bath, the RCTC, will be in the future, whether it's an existing location or an alternative location. The second important part of these visioning meetings is that we get by. Everybody who starts to become involved, and in further involvement, that start the head ownership of the process, multiply in the design, and what this project will be moving in the future, and that is the intention. Fourth task that we're working on right now, again, Patrick touched on this, is the site selection. So we're currently looking at the existing building and site, assessing that, but we're also looking at alternative sites, and so we're, and basically, Steve, architect from the State of Techniques, talk about that a little bit. a little bit more.
And I'll plug in, for those of you that are sitting here, I know I have elementary students, and Steve told me all the way off base here, but my, maybe it's ambitious, but the goal would be to possibly be in a new, more renovated structure within four or five years. And so, again, this would affect your children and, you know, really needs your involvement.
I think I might be thinking about someone here, but it's coming up, so it'll be up Okay, so this first slide is just to show you a search area. So what you're seeing with that red line and the kind of yellowish highlight always comes in a little bit, but it's a little bit like that one right there. What you're seeing there is actually the limit of our search. And the idea was to get a good cross-section within a reasonable travel distance toward the bulk of the communities of our S U one school district. What you see, I don't know if this is a little bit of a fast one. So what you're seeing right here is this red blotch that you'll see in other areas. We need to be really careful about where we are looking for these additional sites in current school search, or with the school evaluation, that we don't start to look at sites that are limited in terms of your water source. So what these areas are, are actually your aquifers and service intakes for your water supply. So the public water supply that you all benefit from are noted by these red blotchy areas, but also these small red circles with the yellow in between, those are public water wells, so water services with protective boundaries around them. So we try to be mindful when we're looking for big sites to develop, that we don't place a site where we're compromising public water. So that's one of our very first things that we look at. The next one, in terms of what D O E is going to look for, will be that you place the school or a future school within an area of growth. And so communities have defined areas of growth that are defined not only locally but statewide. And so what you see here with these purple colors, those are actually your, those giving growth boundaries. And so what those do is they tell us where growth is happening, but also where it's forecasted. So we start to look at refining our search within the purple areas in this case, to make sure that we're placing schools within areas of growth. The other area that's hard for you guys to see at a distance, this darker purple, or darker blue area, you'll see it reflected here, these are actually urban compact areas. And what that means is that those are areas that are locally regulated for traffic impacts as opposed to state-related for traffic impacts. This is a benefit to a school project because it essentially takes a layer of review on the process. So it allows you a much greater hands-on saying what's happening in the community. So this is just the general search area. I just wanted to give you an idea of where we started. It was a lot of parcels starting out. You guys have a lot of big parcels, which is great. So the next site, you can see we started to refine around what was the biggest urban growth area. And so what you're seeing is two different colors here. You're seeing this reddish tint, but also this kind of pink or fuchsia tint. And what those are representing are two different parcel queries. It's representing parcels that are 10 acres or more, abutting 10 acres or more or 20 acres or more, and parcels that are greater than 30 acres. And so you end up with this kind of diagrammatic spread of colors through your community. What we did next was we identified areas, so we can't zoom in here, but parcels like that where they have a really great presence in the community, and they're abutting maybe multiple parcels that are maybe less than 10 acres, but when you place them together, represent a great strategic opportunity. So we started to look at some of those areas. So that next refinement looks a little bit like this. And we categorized them in the northern parcels, a private owned estate with strategic placements, the public works facility, and then a budding parcel, Wink Farm and that. And then an area we're calling the central school, strategic parcels. It's actually a configuration of a lot of smaller parcels that make for an opportunity next year existing middle school campus, so really right across the street from here. And then Wink Farm, West Bath. And then south of that, we looked at the southern string of parcels. So you can kind of see how these grew and merged. The other important thing that I, I'm sorry, I kind of glossed over in this area. These parcels in orange actually define your more infrastructure-rich parcels. So what that means is that they have a greater availability of water, sewer, and gas. They wouldn't require an onsite well for you to serve water to the school, but also wouldn't require an onsite subject system, which could be something that's going to be a difficulty to maintain for a lot of years. So this is, right now, this is the query that we're looking at. Again, we gave them these fun titles. What that looks like is, as we started to reach out to landowners, we found out that, you know, some of these parcels are actually owned by land trusts. We essentially, if we go back inside and look at the top here, all of these were eliminated pretty quickly. There wasn't an availability to search the land for rental pools or if it's not interested, it's all like the land. So then we moved down to the center, and you can see this is the Wink Farm area, you can see where the middle school is. And that both of these potential parcel configurations lend a benefit to the already existing infrastructure, allowing you to do more with the research sources you currently have. And you can see, you know, there's certainly dynamics between community fields, walkability within the community, access within the school district. Having a campus-like format lends some benefits. So both of these became pretty exciting opportunities. And they're all available. So the next steps are we're going to go out and look for rental pools on these sites, and we'll start to observe the onsite conditions. So we obtained permissions from everyone in one of these, I believe. I think we're waiting on one parcel per feedback. And we'll go out to the sites and make sure there's, you know, there's no rental pools, but if there are, we're going to identify where they are and how rare and sensitive they are. Next area is actually in West Bath, it's abutting Wink Farm. So this is an extension of the Wink Farm business park in West Bath. And again, you can see the proximity to your existing facilities right here. Great, great opportunity for connectivity right across the river. It's still very close to all of your existing campus right now. Then as we go down to the southern string, we ended up with two defined parcel strings, essentially. They were segregated in the middle by a piece of property that was not available for inquiry or search. And what you end up with is two very large parcel configurations that would be great for what you're looking for, for those school fields and associated park, and we'll do these parcels. So we'll be going out to check the rental pools and onsite conditions for these parcels as well. After that, we actually had several people who came forward with suggestions, and even though we had eliminated them as part of our original search, we did go through and do a due diligence just to make sure, if somebody's coming forward, we want to make sure that we've checked it. So one of the suggestions was actually a portion of the high school campus. We did look into it, and we had to eliminate it. The portion that they might be willing to separate from their existing campus was too small to meet the school's needs. We looked at all parcels, in fact, this is hard for you to see at the scale, but all of the parcels immediately surrounding the existing school. And that represents a lot of logistical challenges, not only the sheer number that would be required to purchase, but even in a perfect world, if we could acquire all of those when they were donated, you still really couldn't get what you're looking for on all of those parcels. And I would, I would think you're starting to mess with that with your downtown. So we eliminated this area. A couple that we have, that we have not eliminated, but I am recommending that you eliminate them, are some areas near the golf course. There's two areas of parcels that are out there. The biggest constraint for this one is that there are no utilities in this area. So you'll be extending electric, you would have onsite sewer, onsite well. It's not in the urban growth area. You would be looking to extend three base power into the site, and there's no gas. So there's just a few infrastructure issues here that, so I would recommend that we eliminated it. It would be a beautiful piece of land, but certainly, and not to mention some of the access issues. You know, these are local, local roads that probably aren't suited for that. This would be the other one. This one has the same infrastructure connectivity issue, but also has a CMP transmission line running right through the middle of it, which I probably don't have to point out, D O E is not a real fan of transmission lines going through the site. So this is what it looks like, and this is what it looks like with your growth boundary. You can see they all fit quite nicely. I did put your existing middle school and your existing high school sites. So you can see a demonstration of how large these parcels are in comparison to the land that you are currently residing from. So you can start to see the potential, not only for sites in this area or in this area, but what that might represent in terms of what the whole building might look like someday. And then this is just that area without the urban growth boundary on it. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Anyone else, Steve on it here?
So if we're looking at that slide before that was determined by person, are you considering, is a parcel, the purple is the growth area? So there's no site, is there ever a site consideration anywhere?
We did look at the areas in Woolwich, and I'm sorry I don't have the graphic, but if we went back, so if you look in this area right here, see how narrow the growth boundaries are in that area, but also the area of aquifer and surface intake? What this isn't showing is there's a pretty significant wetland and marsh in this area. And there is, I think it's right here, it was a parcel that we looked at. But as you start to look at it with the wetland there, there's an inland, I haven't got to the rare earth species zone, there's an inland waiting for habitat that takes up over half of the parcel. There was a, even though it doesn't show on here, there was a culled well with a protection boundary, I think it's, you know, showing them, but it just made her a very compromised parcel. So we did actually look at the entire town limits of Woolwich in our first search.
And parcels defined by something that's promoted to sale? Parcels, are, are, are land, is it marketable or sale?
No, the parcels are just whatever might be perfect for you guys to look at. And then the next step was to ask owners if they were interested in consideration. So it doesn't have anything to do with market condition or availability, it literally has to do with, this is a really great parcel for our S U one, and we should look at, not looking if it's available, but exploring what the onsite conditions are.
Do you farm, I think in a part of the farm, that's a lot of development rent, does that limit the ability because it's for a nonprofit and a place to spend time over? Would that violate?
No, we would have to do a little bit more research, but right now, what it looks like is that there was a window of time that, you know, you leave that open for institutional or industrial development. That window was closing, which leaves that open for any type of development really.
Would you speak to the philosophy behind doing construction in a growth area? What is the direction out for that?
The philosophy behind it, it's a preferred, it's actually a pretty lengthy section in the D O E approval for site selection is what the questions are, is it in an improved growth area? And so the benefit would be that these are areas that through comprehensive planning, city planners, your local town planners have defined as, these are areas that are seeing growth, these are areas that are forecasted for growth, and that gives you a greater residential unit density, but it also gives you areas where you can start with a greater tax base as areas develop. It would create wonderful communities, it would create infrastructure, it would create a many services that would benefit, you know, school program programs or extracurricular
I guess, well, off on that question, one, is there, aren't there some philosophies of sort of build it and they will come? You know, you build it in a location where you do the layout that you want, you're not restricted by boundaries, and there's growth that happens around that. And the other piece of that is taking into consideration that urban growth is definitely going to be defined differently and represented differently by the town members by zoning in the town versus the city.
I think that what you'll find is that urban growth areas are normally defined by the infrastructure that's available. So it's not too far off to look at some of the areas that, you know, some of these areas that might be great, some of these areas that, you know, there might be some bigger parcels. The issue is always that there isn't a huge population density in those areas. And while that might not be a big deal, because everyone's in the car these days, I think the structure is, is very sensitive to extended. I think probably the bigger piece would be if you were building a school without federal or state funds, it probably would be an issue when you could build your school outside the city limits and not worry about the kind of moving a school from the center of a community and moving it to the outside. In this process, it's actually a requirement. So the state is looking for you to place your school in areas that are not protected.
So specifically, some of the things that you talked about are access to utilities, access to power, water, sewer, roads, that sort, it's not necessarily density of population, but access to utilities?
Right, the population is probably smaller in comparison to the actual infrastructure. The idea would be that if you were, if you were to extend infrastructure to a site that's outside of, outside of these areas, I would call it crippling your project. You would cripple your project with just huge infrastructure costs that really aren't benefiting your community, and while you might be getting a bigger site outside of the area, you're probably giving up something in order to extend utilities.
Are you any concerned with any of our recent possible legislation, you know, for site evaluation, site testing, that, in theory, you've got a real deal?
In terms of this process? No, I would think this process, this is, this is a really great process, actually. The difference being, the old process used to be you called a real estate broker, found out what parcels were for sale in your area, or had somebody donate a parcel, and you did due diligence to show how you could fit your school onto this parcel. This, this process actually puts it in that you define what is best for your district, and then you show how it's going to accommodate your program, as opposed to showing how you're really going to cram everything in there and take liberties with filling wetlands or extending infrastructure. So this process is actually better, and it's better for you regardless of what the legislation and I think this actually supports.
I just want to add, just to put this into the larger picture, the reason why we're doing this process right now, when no decision has been made on to, you know, build a new school or renovate now to exist in school, is that we have a very tight window coming up soon in terms of evaluating new sites. Kylie mentioned a federal pool investigation. Does everybody understand what that means? These are smallish, smallish pools of water that form this time of year, the spring, that are, and this is just a mine lane in this district, that are basically that are basically breeding grounds for wildlife, so frogs, for instance. These pools only last two to three years. And so the Department of Environmental Protection establishes a window in the spring when you go out and you start investigating. You walk around the sites, look for them, and measure them, and identify where they are. And then you go back in a few weeks and check to make sure if they're still there or if they've disappeared. This window of opportunity is only this time of the year. And if we miss it, it delays this whole site selection process for a whole year. We won't be able to do it until next year. So that's why we're going to go in this process right now. Even though it seems like it's a little premature, we're just beginning the entire process of thinking about what this school is going to be in the future. But this is one of the tasks that we need to do right now, otherwise it will be delayed a whole year. So I just wanted to say that to kind of put this on to perspective. We're not trying to push a new school or push a new site on the community at this time, but this is work that really needs to happen now to keep us on in the overall schedule. Thank you.
Thank you, Kylie and Steve, appreciate it. We have had people that have called us, like Al Force, like Kyle, School, other pieces of land, which again has made us investigate, even though I think we were pretty thorough in our search from the beginning. We have been, again, doing our due diligence. We've called quite a few of the owners around the existing Morris High School, and we've received some responses as, yeah, I think about it, how much you got offered me. Or we have received three or four people today that have said, no, they're not interested. We certainly respect that. But again, we're trying to look at this project from all angles.
So can you talk about that process a little bit? Because I'm curious, as we progress here, if we decide to look at an alternative site, what is the, what does the state allow in terms of the amount that we're allowed to spend for a piece of property? And how does that negotiation process, particularly if it comes down to maybe two or, you know, hopefully not one site, how has that been handled in the past with other schools?
I don't really want to talk about that, but I know that we've hoped to narrow it down to two here, look at them extensively, and we would talk with the owner, and we would have appraisal done ourselves, and assuming that they would have one done, and then it would be a negotiated process. And that we're looking for, actually, we're meeting on Thursday with the Department of Education. And, you know, the amount of acreage is, well, we're going to try to find out thirty-five-ish. I think it was recommended that the state would support financially for that amount of acreage. But I'd like to go ahead and...
I think what you'll find is that the process, we'll add a little bit, but generally, the process is the state will define how many acres are allotted, how many they'll fund. And that's based on your students. And I think it is somewhere between thirty-five and forty right now. And then the next step would be, we'll go through the site selection process, and we'll narrow it down to, well, the rental pools will certainly help. Those will, they'll find sense to drop out fairly quickly after that. And then we'll start to review, really, the opportunities and constraints of each study. And we'll weigh them against each other in a matrix, and initially, you're going to have very close. Then that generally comes back, we want to make sure we have everyone's feedback. We go through a state review process. We'll come back for a straw poll to show support to move forward with the site if you decide to. And then from there, you do an appraisal on the final site. That final site takes an average of the two appraisals. It's almost not more than, at least ten percent apart, and that's when the state will pay. So if you end up with seventy, eighty acres, the state will pay for the average of two appraisals for the thirty-five or forty that you're allotted. And then the decision is up to you as a community if you want to locally fund to acquire additional acreage.
So just in terms of determining a price based on fair market value, and then determinations through the average of two appraisals, so there's no real negotiation?
Well, I mean, certainly, a landowner could ask for more, but it would be at a low cost, a very low cost.
All right, great, thank you. All right, item eight point two, finance committee. Since Steve is not here, we'll move on then. Is there something you want to add? Okay, item three, facilities. Bill is not here tonight, so we're not recording on facilities committee. Item eight point four is reapportionment committee. I'll just speak to that quickly, unless you want to. No, okay. All right, the group has determined that we would send a letter to the state with two options. The state has thirty days to respond back to us. You know, it was, their attorney wasn't even going to have an opportunity to look at it until sometime last week, oh, tomorrow, this week, excuse me. In the meantime, the group has met once, and since I wasn't at that meeting, Jen, do you want to just give a brief synopsis of what was discussed?
We decided as a group to look at what the options are that the state had given us, just to say if what we had presented was not acceptable, and we were running on a short timeframe, we were trying to find a plan B. So we looked at what the state provides, and that's notwithstanding the fact that we have a special law that applies to us. So we were looking at how things are set up now, what the intent of our portion was, how we could as closely mirror that as possible with the options that the state provides for all our students. So it was a good discussion. I think everybody across all communities was wanting to support the initial intent of how L ninety-nine, ten was, and equal representation for all our communities. And we came to some tentative discussions on what would be, if we had to choose something that the state would give us, what would the options we would choose? So I think we've made progress. We're not just waiting around until the state gets back to us. We're meeting every single week, and we were really pushing to try to make the decision be something that all communities feel represents them, represents everyone's best interests, students, communities, municipalities, citizens, and everybody in the community.
Great, any questions from the board on that? Just one other thing to add, the two options that we sent. One option was one, 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 and five, meaning one board member would be elected from each of the four communities, and then there would be five at-large members. The other option, you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, was two, 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 one, and two. So two members elected from each of the communities except Rouseville, which would elect just one, and then there would be two at-large members. And in both of those instances, there were no weighted votes. There was a no-weighted-vote scenario. So wait to see, you know, what comes back from the state, and we will be meeting again tomorrow night. Move on to superintendent's report, Patrick?
Just a couple of updates. The district had the Battle of the Books, which is our annual, my favorite event. Unfortunately, it couldn't be there this year on April 2nd. But I do want to thank Mr. Berkowitz for taking over my responsibilities. And I think it was a wonderful event that promotes literacy, and it's a great academic competition for our students and staff that participate in it. I'd like to thank Dean, Emerson, his staff, and our principals. And also, we do have key people in each one of our buildings that are responsible for coordinating the MEA assessments, SWARDA balance assessments that some of your students, you know, I'm sure took. And I think it really went smoothly in our system just because of the proactive piece of our administration, but also key people in each of our buildings. So I'd like to recognize them. Eighth grade career fair went very well this year, big success. I don't know if I mentioned this last time, I may have sent an email to the board, but we have a lot of Odyssey alumni teams that are very successful and do a great job. But we have a freshman team from Morris, that place first, and will be headed to Michigan State, I believe it is, in May. They compete against UofM all over the world. So they're in the process of fundraising right now, but congratulations to them. And lastly, I just want to mention, I didn't send an email to Diagnable's staff yet because I don't have all the details that the staff may have. But we received something just, you know, I think over the weekend from the Department of Education that recognized Diagnable as a high-progress reward school. And that is recognizing schools as among the highest fifteen percent of Title I schools with the greatest level of progress over a three-year period. So I don't know all the details I tried to go out there today. It's based on our, you know, EGA MEA scores for the past third grade, and looking at progress that we've made, you know, on those assessments, and which assessments they're using. So I'll email the board, and also, you know, but it's obviously very good news, and it's a compliment to the staff of the community, everybody affiliated with Diagnable.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Patrick? All right, Deborah, financial report?
Financial report for the end of March. We are seventy-two percent along as far as our expenses go. Everything remains on a positive path. We have eleven remaining pays to hit this budget. That's in compared to about six million dollars more. So we're looking good for the end of the year. Received a call yesterday, and our auditors are coming back in a couple of weeks. So we're looking to, and things are going okay.
Any questions for Deborah? Okay, thank you. Okay, item ten, old business. Item ten point one, review of board goals. I understand that the next, our next board meeting will be looking at, get a presentation on food service, is that correct? The other thing, as I mentioned in the last meeting, and I think it's something that we need to think about, we include it in this year's goals, or think about next year. But I think it would be beneficial for the board to get a presentation, both on the SWARDA balance test, to hear how that went, you know, success and some challenges, and also to just look generally at how much testing we're doing as a district, what's beneficial, what's not. It might be something we might want to look at this summer prior to the SWARDA election. Any questions on the goals? Okay, item ten point two, second reading of policy I H, B H, alternative education options slash programs. This is an action item. Is there a motion on this policy? Moved to accept by Allen. Second by Kyle. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion to accept, raise your hand. Not opposed, that passes. Item ten point three, second reading of policy I K, student achievement, evaluation of student achievement slash proficiency. Is there a motion on this policy? Moved to accept by Jen. Is there a second? Second by Allen. Any further discussion on this one? All those in favor of the motion to accept, raise your hand. Again, that passes unanimously. Item ten point four, second reading of policy I L A, student assessment. Motion on this policy? Moved to accept by Kyle. Second by Jen, further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. All right, on to new business. Item eleven point one, eleven point one A, I'll turn this over to Patrick.
Just to announce a resignation, Lyndon Blaken, who was a health teacher at Morris Central School, just like to thank her for her service and her mission.
Okay, item eleven point two, this is an action item. We have three nominations for open positions in the district. Patrick, did you want to open with that?
So as much as we're going to miss Sharon, Sally, but next year, we need to move on. Unfortunately, I leave that aside after, I need to talk, I need to get over that they're leaving. I should have said it that way. But I do have three nominations, and we should take these separately, you know, this evening. So the first one I have is nomination Justin Keller as new special education director. And you can see in your backup, that I provided, would you just share a little bit, just briefly with the people that are here? But on the backup, you can see, we had seven applications. We interviewed four people. The committee always consists of teachers, community members, not community members, but staff members, and sometimes parents and principals. And in this case, we had eight special ed staff that were on the committee as well. And it was a unanimous choice. And Justin is currently a teacher at Fisher Mitchell School. Prior to that, he was a special ed coordinator in the Lewiston Public Schools, prior to that as a special ed teacher in Brunswick. So that's Justin.
Okay, is there a motion for Justin Keller? Moved to approve. Second by Jen. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve nomination? Raise your hand. Okay, that passes. Justin, congratulations on your new position.
Next, I'd like to nominate Jennifer.
You've got big shoes to fill.
Jennifer Bost as the principal at Diagnable School. Jennifer is currently the principal at Hancock Grammar School in Hancock, Maine, down east. It's a K-8 school, she's been a principal there for four years. Prior to that, she was a science teacher at the high school level and a science teacher at the middle school level. And we have Tim, Bill, Bill Burgins was on the special ed interviewing committee, and Tim, Alan Ross involved in BMS at Diagnable. But Jennifer comes very highly recommended, and I think will be a great fit for us.
Alan, you were on that committee, did you want to add anything to that?
I'm sure you have a lot to say, you can do.
Great. Then would you like to make the nomination? Go ahead. Okay, moved to approve nomination by Patrick, Jennifer Bost, Diagnable principal. Is there a second? Second by Kyle. Any further discussion? I know she was a great man, and I'm glad that we thought of her. Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Not opposed, welcome to the district, Jennifer.
Lastly, I'd like to nominate Brandon Ward as the new principal of Bethnal School. And Brandon currently is the assistant principal at Bouquet Region Elementary School, which is a K-8 school. And prior to that, he was a foreign language teacher at the middle school level, a team leader at Oxford Middle School.
I sat in on that committee. I think he's going to be a great candidate, really looking forward to it. We had a lot of very qualified people, and it was a very tough decision.
We had a lot of very qualified people, and it was a, it was a very tough decision. And I would make the nomination, but I'm sure, somebody said this to me the other day, that I'm not allowed to do that under law rules or not allowed to make the motion.
I also would give my full consideration.
Oh, did you?
He was very awesome, personally, and extremely talented.
All right, so you'll make the motion, Allen? All right. Motion to approve the nomination of Brandon Ward for the Bethnal School principal. Is there a second?
No second.
Second by Jen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, welcome Brandon. And again, I just need to throw out there, you know, when, I think it was Bud first put in his resignation, I stated to the administration, didn't want any more retirements at least as long as I was sitting on this board. And then Sharon and Sally followed shortly after that. So, you know, I have really enjoyed working with you folks, I wish you the best of luck. And I'm excited about the direction that we're headed in, but you guys have been really super people to work with, and I really, really appreciate that. And so, thank you. And don't let the door hinge on the way out. All right, on to item eleven point three, approval of probationary teachers. This is, was attached in your packet. Patrick, I'll turn this over to you.
Yeah, it's just, it's the time of year where annually we have to, we have teachers named that go from probationary one to two and then two to three. So the list is here, obviously you can see one or two people. One person I would remove on this, and I didn't catch this, is Lyndon Lightman, who we just accepted resignation, just crossed her off on that list. Then you can see the top fifteen or so are going for probationary one, probationary two teachers, and then the last maybe ten are going for probationary two, probationary three. And I've communicated with all of our administrators, they do a very good job of evaluating our teachers and preserving our teachers, and we are comfortable with all of these people moving from either probationary one to two or two to three.
Okay, this is an action item. Is there a motion to approve this list with the elimination of Lyndon Lightman? Please.
I'm not familiar with this part of probation. Doesn't this usually have a pack of new teachers that, teachers that are just, are they teachers that are new to our district or new when they're teaching?
Maybe both, I don't probably see some names on here, but if they left in the teaching professional, they left our district, they come back, do a vote.
And there's also, the state requirement, I think, changed. It used to be you were, it was just two years that you were on probation, it's now three years. So we have to approve people going from one to two and then from two to three.
And what happens after three, they automatically get a continuing contract?
Yeah, they get a continuing contract from there.
Okay, and I guess I just have to ask this before we make the motion. Are, I know it's a sensitive topic, but I need to ask, are there any teachers who are probationary who are not on this list or not?
Not this year, there are a couple, but you would, well, obviously there's a location you would look at here that's not on here, that's what's that. I mean, they have some probationary teachers, I've communicated with them only, you know, because they're not gonna be with us any longer. But as far as this year probationary coming forward, there is none in the past, there has been, you know, some, but we are not confident that they'll be in the end to go for our district.
Okay. Any further questions? Someone willing to make a motion?
I'd make a motion.
Okay, to approve the list of probationary two and three staff from 2015, 2016. Is there a second? Second by Allen. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hands. Not opposed. Okay, item eleven point four, field trip requests. We have a number of out of state requests and an overnight trip. This is an action item. Before we make a motion, does anyone have any questions about the these trips? Jen?
There is students going to Canada, so that's not just out of state, it's out of country. How do we work out the order and pass those through?
I honestly don't know how that works. But I will find out personally tomorrow morning. You know, I should know, but because we do this, we have done this for three years now, and Jennifer is already, you know, constantly doing this, she has family up there, they're going to U of M, can't even see on there, but they are crossing the border, so I'll find out tomorrow morning, but I'm, I don't know where they're going, but I'll find out if this passes and they're getting ahead of time for what it is. But I think it's seven, six students or seven students that are going. I'm sure that they've been prepared with that, I don't know if Jay Pickerton knows, but I'm not gonna put him on the spot either, I'll pitch you the answer tomorrow morning.
I dropped there, I mean, I know there's a lot of students, eight students, isn't
Any other questions on these? All right, I had one, you had mentioned the Odyssey of the Mind trip. I think when I looked at that one...
Yeah, it was a generic one, and I did contact Kim Gates today, and I don't know, you know, right now, but I think it's six students that might be going, five or six students, and then two adults, and it's the Michigan City University. And the date, what do you have there, the nineteenth through the twenty-second?
Yep.
The nineteenth, I think it may be the seventeenth through the twenty-second. So we put this in a long time ago just because in case we're gonna have a teen qualify, we don't always have a teen qualify, but she was able to give me those details so I could pass them along to you tonight.
And I'm assuming they're handling flights for this through fundraising?
Yes, it is through fundraising, outside fundraising at this point.
Okay, so we can go down through these?
If you want to take, I think we should have done this for you, but if you want to take, we have Bethnal, fifth grade going to Boston. We've got Pittsburgh, fourth grade going to Boston, we've got Woolworth fifth grade going to Boston. If you want, if you're comfortable taking all three of those together, just any other questions, that makes sense, right?
Everybody fine with that? Who would like to make the motion then?
I would approve that request.
So which ones are you talking about?
I would approve the four, eleven four A.
Yeah.
Eleven four E. And eleven four D.
Okay, there's a motion now to approve field trip requests, eleven point four A, eleven point four D, and eleven point four E. Is there a second? Second by Kyle. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. Okay, remaining, we have, we're gonna hold off on eleven point four B until we get that information or we can make a motion contingent upon that?
I think they've been doing it, this has been, I've heard they've done many times. I think we can make a contingent on that. I'm sure there's a process in place. I'd like to make a motion. I would approve item eleven point four B with the contingency of Patrick making that motion.
Okay. Motion by Jen to approve contingent one information for Patrick. Is there a second? Second by Megan. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Everybody want to make a motion? We still have a few more here.
I'd like to make a motion.
I would make a motion to accept eleven point four F.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion to accept eleven point four F and eleven point four G. Motion by Kyle. Second by Jen. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Not opposed, that passes. And we just need a motion for eleven point four C. And that would be contingent with the changes. Okay. Motion from Allen to approve eleven point four C with changes. Is there a second?
No second.
Second Jen? Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, that passes. All right, our second public comment section, item twelve point O. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Stephanie Wallace. I currently have a freshman at Morris and second reader at Pittsburgh. And I don't want to digress too much, but I do want to say, thanks to you both, for your support. And this is Donnie. I am concerned for her position as well, because she's doing it for the ladies. But I do see that there is a potential issue with the budget, the second reading of the budget on Monday the fourth. You had stated that that is when we would need people to come here to have their say. That is also election day for the town of Pittsburgh, and then we have our town meeting on the sixth. So we're asking the same people that are signing that petition to go out and have an election and then come here, and I think there's gonna be conflict in many sorts for that. So I didn't know if there was any feedback that you could provide to help us work that out, because I do feel that that's very important.
Let me just check, is that the, is that the second reading for us or is that the public?
The fourth would be the second reading for the board. And like Jen was explaining earlier, if the board was comfortable next Monday night, they would adopt, they would adopt the budget. And then, then it would go forward to, on the twenty-sixth of May, is the one that what I would call our budget public, you know, public meeting, which happens at BMS. And that's what, I mean, not saying that we don't want people to come next Monday night, because that would be great too. But on the twenty-sixth, that's what Tim was referring to, where people, you sign in and then that's when someone can make a motion to...
Okay, so, May twenty-sixth. So we would have our town meeting in Pittsburgh on May sixth. Do we have a say, well, I mean, I know we have a say at our town meeting. Do we have a say there that we can bring to you on the twenty-sixth instead of having the whole town coming here? We're very passionate at Pittsburgh. And I have to go back, because as much as you feel you are sensitive, we are going at the board, I feel sensitive in the fact that you're coming out of Pittsburgh and the fact that you aren't. We understand and completely appreciate what you're trying to do. And I hope you can do the same for us. But could we at our town meeting get the petition signed there or have a vote there at our town meeting and bring that to you on the twenty-sixth?
Now, the way it works is, and the state dictates this, so every, every RSU in the state and I think every school board, I know every RSU has to follow this policy. So, no, it is, every school district in the state has to follow this policy. With a budget, it's called a two-part validation. So what it means is, on the fourth, the board will vote and they'll accrue the budget that will then go before all the voters in all the communities on the twenty-sixth. And that's a town meeting style meeting. So on the twenty-sixth, that's when we have all the citizens from the community come and by a show of hands, either vote the budget up or vote it down, the same way that we've always done when we were individual towns. Then the second part, and again, this is required by the state, the second part is, June ninth, it will go to referendum. So if the budget gets voted in favor by the public on the twenty-sixth, then it goes on the ballot on the ninth and they vote for it in the polls. I think the hope has always been, hopefully in this community and all communities, that people show up for vote. But the public's opportunity to change the budget after the board kind of makes it their own budget is that town hall style meeting on the twenty-sixth, which is right here at the middle school. And all citizens come and vote, and you'll get a card, and every citizen has to register in, just like you do at your town meeting, but it's just for school budget. And that's what we, you know, that's what we encourage citizens to come and participate and, you know, be part of the budget and kind of take ownership, because it goes from us to them. And then whatever they vote on is what gets voted on in the polls. So does that, have I clarified it or am I making it more confusing?
No, that's fair enough. No, that works. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak?
I just wanted to say to you that as a board, I don't feel like the kind of sort of things of you is the enemy. As you said, I think we're trying to have a respectful dialogue between the two, and as you can imagine, we are quite passionate about certain issues. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that we respect what you're doing, and we hope you can respect what we're doing too. The other issue is, I just want to know what kind of number we need to increase the budget by to get Cathy's position approved. So when we go to the meeting on the twenty-sixth, what number do we need to increase the RSU budget by to get that halfway approved?
I don't have that number, but I can get it to the central office, contact your emails.
And do we, I have to say, I'm sorry, I've been very active at our local town meetings, but I haven't been at the RSU approval budget meetings unfortunately due to time concerns. But do we bring that right forward from the beginning? Or what is the, I guess, what is the etiquette for that?
We, there's a couple of things, and we've sort of emphasized this the past couple of years. We encourage people to be present, but I've been frustrated because oftentimes people will show up and they don't know what the process is, so we haven't done a good job explaining the process. So people show up and they're like, I don't know when to vote, and I don't know what to say. So the past couple of years, we've tried to have information in a handout that describes when you would make a motion and how to go about it. I think it happens during the gen, for this particular thing, would happen under the general instruction piece. And the way it works is, the board is sitting up in front of the stage, and again, state sets this up, so we have to follow the way the state lays it out. And we go through a series of cost centers. And one of us on the board will make a motion to approve. There will be a second, and then there will be some explanation about what that cost center is. And they're usually big cost centers, like Cathy's position, I think, falls under general instruction, which includes all of the staff, you know, special education, it's a whole encompasses all of special education. So we describe what it is, and then we, then we open it up to the public to if they want to ask questions or they want to make amendments. If they make amendment, they make a motion, and then that gets seconded, and then there's discussion amongst the public, and then it gets voted on. The guy that always runs these, he's from Thibserd, John Morris. John likes to move things along. I don't really like, I like people to understand what's going on, and be able to ask questions, and not feel like, I don't know what just happened. Because the first couple of times I did these under this state format, I wasn't sure what happened. So if you have access to John, and maybe I'll make a comment, we need to slow it down. People need to understand what's going on and have that opportunity.
My other quick question is, is there any way to move the question tonight, or is that our next day? Like, could you, as a board, tonight vote to amend the budget by her salary, or is that something we can do tonight?
We, we could have, and again, I felt that this is, you know, each year, there are issues that come up within, you know, a school or a community that people feel strongly about. And I, this was one this year, and I felt I needed to address it upfront, so that you guys kind of knew where I was coming from. And I had addressed the board as well. There wasn't much discussion amongst the board about the current status of the budget. We will be discussing it again on the 6th. And that's our last time as a board to discuss it, and then we will vote on it. So we could have talked about tonight making changes, but we really don't make any final changes. It's not etched in stone until the 4th. And that's when the board kind of takes the budget from the administration, and we make it ours. We order our stamp on it, we say this is our budget. And then it's when we go to the public, we say, okay, now you need to vote on it. And that's when that meeting on the 26th will happen. So I can't, I don't, I can't speak for the board, you know, Bill wasn't here, Steve wasn't here. I really don't know how people feel about that particular issue, or any other issue within the budget. It will get discussed one more time, and the board will vote on it. But it doesn't, that just, it doesn't end there. The public has to vote on that budget, and they have to do it twice.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question. So you vote, make motion, and the second, that second comes from the audience?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, it's all the public at that point.
Alright, and I don't want to speak to John Morris, he's the next one.
Yeah, tell him. His heels, he always says, and he's been doing this for years, these are Morris's rules. And he likes to get through it. And certainly, there's a lot of information, and we want to, you know, we don't want to be there till 11 o'clock at night. But I think it's important that the public feel that they're part of the process, because otherwise, they're just raising their hand, not really getting what it is that they're doing. And I think that's an important part of the process. Anyone else from the public? Okay. Item 13, set next meeting date and location. And we just talked about that, we have a second reading of the budget. Monday, May 4th, back here at 6:00 PM. That agenda will strictly be budget. Anybody have any issues with that date? And then our next regular board meeting is two weeks after that, the 18th, again, back here at VMS. So is there a vote to adjourn? By Kyle, seconded by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thank you very much for coming, this meeting is adjourned.